All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 4th Bruce Township Planning Commission meeting. Do you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Our meeting start time is six o'clock PM. Dana Wichpall, roll please.
Sure. Boyce?
Yes.
Benson? Dave Benson?
Here.
Hegelstein?
Here.
Jared Benson?
Here.
Daryl Blaylock?
Uh, absent.
Barnett?
Here.
Cam?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Before we start the business part of our meeting, I would ask you, join us as we rise with the pledge allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to Georgia, Colorado, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is a public business meeting of the planning commission, but we do welcome public comments at various points throughout our agenda. We do request that you sign into the table on my right, along the wall there, if you haven't already done so, just so we have a record of your visit or your attendance with us. The planning commission is made up of seven Bruce Township residents appointed by the board. In addition, we have township employee Dana Buchanan, who's the township planning coordinator, and we also have Joe Tangeri, who is a professional planner from Giffords, who advises us in the work that we do. Tonight, there will be two opportunities for public comments. General comments here at near the beginning, and then we do have a public hearing this evening regarding the rezoning request for property residing between Van Dyke and Mellon. So those will be the two opportunities this evening. Generally, for public comments, we ask that you keep the length of your comments to about three minutes. If you're here representing neighborhood or multiple residents, we will increase that to five minutes. And as you approach the podium, we would ask that you state your name and address, and please be sure to address any comments to the commissioners and not anybody in the audience. With that, on behalf of my fellow commissioners, I would do appreciate your participation this evening. Okay, so looking at the agenda for this evening, we do have, next up would be the approval of the minutes from the November meeting. Commissioners, you've all received a copy of those. Does anybody have any amendments to the November minutes? There are none? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Barnett, seconded by Hegelstein. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item five on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I do have two changes. One, eight B, the V and G Beaver Creek Lot 21 review. Dana just informed me that that's been postponed, and that will be on the January, January 8th meeting. So we're going to take eight B off the agenda for this evening. The other item is put under new business is 11A would be the election of a vice chair for the planning commission, based on Ed Cupid's resignation from the PC.
A motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Boyce, seconded by Commissioner Cam, to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion to approve the amended agenda passes. All right, so that brings us to item six this evening, which is our public comment. So, as I mentioned previously, there is a public hearing tonight specifically on a rezoning request. So if you're here to speak on that, you can save the comments for that time, which will be coming up here shortly. But if you are here to speak on anything, generally, you want to address the planning commission, please come up to the podium at this time and state your name and address, and share your comments. Seeing nobody moving, we will move on to item seven. Item seven is the public hearing for the Lombardo rezoning for property between Van Dyke and Mellon. Cosmo, you want to give us a rundown?
Yes, I would love to.
So we'll have the applicant kind of give us an overview of the project as proposed. We will get some insight from our planner, his review, and then we'll open up the public hearing at that time.
Cosmo, you can pull your chair up and use Dana's mic.
Yeah, I don't necessarily, this mouse is wireless, so I can click through the
Oh, okay.
Click through the slides with it. Thank you, Dana. I appreciate it.
Do you have a light probably a little bit?
It looks like it's
It shows pretty good, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so I am Cosmo. I'm with Lombardo Homes, address of 13001 23 Mile Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. I'm here to present a rezoning, a revised rezoning request to you on some land between Van Dyke and Mellon Street. So, as I said before, this is a revised rezoning. So kind of what I want to go over tonight in my pretty quick presentation is our previously proposed rezoning insight plan, and then I went back and I looked at the motion you guys made, and there are four general concerns there, and then our current proposed rezoning slash site plan in response to those concerns you had. I want to talk again about what we feel are the community benefits to this rezoning request, and then go over requests, and I'm here to answer questions. So, on in August of 2024, we came before you guys with this proposed rezoning. It was to take 22 approximate acres of land from R1B, C1, and C2, and make it all R1C. And it yielded 47 home sites, and there were a number of things. Residents were very concerned about traffic on Mellon Street. I think if there were 20 residents that came and spoke up here, 15 of them probably talked about traffic on Mellon Street. The planning commission didn't feel that eliminating all the commercial along Van Dyke was consistent with the master plan. They felt that that's been master planned commercial for a long time. It should remain commercial. They were concerned about a spot zoning created by a parcel right there, that then it would be commercial, residential, commercial, creating a spot zoning. And they felt that the R1C being a higher density than the current R1B zoning was a concern. And so, what we've proposed today, and I kind of copied those four things, and so because the residents were very concerned about traffic on Mellon Street, we, as a condition of this rezoning, would have no access to Mellon Street. Due to that, though, we do need to have access off of Van Dyke, and so we've lined up our access with the Hillside Estates right across the street from it, and taken it off Van Dyke only. And we retained the balance of it, all commercial. So we left the commercial, more consistent with the master plan. We took all our traffic off Van Dyke, which, as a condition of this, we would not have access to Mellon Street. And because we needed some residential, I actually contacted the owner of that piece to the south where the spot zoning was being created, and he agreed to put his land into this rezoning request. And so now there is no spot zoning there on Van Dyke. It goes from commercial to residential. No, no spot zoning. And then the R1C being a higher density residential use than the current R1B. So while R1C zoning is more dense than R1B, the overall proposed intensity of the development is significantly less than if the current 12 acres of commercial and 11 approximate acres of residential were developed as currently zoned. And I think the traffic study does a very good job of demonstrating this when you're looking at use intensity, because it's hard to measure density to density when you're talking commercial versus residential. But our traffic study shows 3,100 less trips per day on Van Dyke, which I think is a good demonstrator that the use intensity is significantly less. And R1C zoning is also consistent with the master plan designation for at least the residential portion of this land as low to moderate density residential. I saw that in the planner's review this morning. And it's also consistent with, now lots on Mellon Street are often zoned R1B, but they're not R1B size. Several of them are 75 foot wide. They're actually, some of them are smaller than R1C. These are RM1. Basically, all these lots on Mellon are R1C sized. The home sites in Timbers are 6,000 to 10,000 square foot, much smaller than what we're asking for. And the homes in Hillside Estates across the street from us are 90 foot wide and about 16,000 square foot. The home sites in Kating are pretty large, but they're really the only ones that meet R1B from a lot area perspective, and much of them don't even meet it from a lot frontage perspective. So I really think that R1C, even though you see the R1B zoning around here, really, pretty much everything around here is R1C home site sizes. So just to go over again what we feel are the community benefits to this, to this proposal, we have a density transition here. North of us, we have high intensity commercial, we have mobile home community and 60-foot home sites. And it's better, I think, to transition from those very intense uses to 80, 90-foot home sites down to the larger home sites. And it'll be consistent with what's going on on Mellon to the east of us. The proposed, so the proposed zoning is consistent with the surrounding lot sizes. There's some consistency there. And even though most home sites on Mellon are not zoned R1C, they are the size of R1C home sites. It's very low intensity. The elimination of almost six acres of commercial zoned land and the modest density increase of the residential portion resulted in significantly decreased overall intensity. And then traffic, and this is something that I felt the residents felt was very important. The proposed 34 home sites and six and a half acres of commercial in lieu of, and I did provide a test plan of what could be developed if it were developed exactly the way it's zoned today. It's 14 home sites, but those are all off Mellon Street, and 12 and a half acres of commercial approximately. But it was, our proposal results in a traffic decrease of 3,100 trips per day, and absolutely no traffic on Mellon Street. And one thing that is important, too, is the integration. There's four landowners here, there's six parcels, the zoning lines don't line up with the parcel lines, and they all are awkwardly shaped, very tough to fit anything but maybe a cul-de-sac, a half-loaded cul-de-sac, and maybe some splits. We think that integrating the balance of the land in this area into one integrated community, rather than letting each individual come in and just do whatever they can, which might be disjointed, I think there's a benefit to the integration of the remaining land in this area. So our request is that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning of the subject property from its current zoning designations of C1, C2, and R1B to R1C and C2 with the following conditions. The property shall have no vehicular access to Mellon Street. And then I did forget to mention it, we show a berm between the residential and the commercial, and a berm shall be constructed between the zoning, or the residential and zone, commercial zoning districts. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Cosmo?
Sure, I have a question about the traffic study, but maybe you don't like bringing it up, so.
Yeah, you want to hold that until we come back from Joe's?
Before we open up for comments, should we hear from Joe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or just give us an opportunity to close?
Yeah, if there's anything specific.
We'll have another opportunity to do so.
Yep. All right, Joe, over you.
All right, I'll endeavor not to repeat too much of what has already been said, but so this is, of course, an evolution of the request that was turned down previous meeting to go to R1C on the entire site. They have also expanded the property in the question, as noted, to that one lot that is at the corner of Kating and Van Dyke that currently has the C1 zoning on it. The full site's 23.19 acres. 11.9 acres are currently zoned C1 or C2. And the rest is R1B. So they're proposing to rezone about 16.77 acres of the site to R1C. And then the remaining land keeps its C2 commercial designation. There would be no C1 left under the proposal. Current R1B district requires a minimum of 20,000 square feet of lot size. R1C goes down to 12,000. Maximum number of units that could fit on 16.77 acres of R1C is a lot higher than what you can actually put on it, because you've got to put roads and things in. So strictly speaking, if you just divide the acreage by 12,000, it's 59, but you're going to be down to around 40 at the most with, once you, once you lay it out and put the road and things in there. Concept plan shows 34 units. Some of them are on land that is currently zoned C1 and C2. For comparison, R1B zoning would permit a maximum of 35 lots, but again, that number's a lot higher than what you actually get once you carve out land for streets and things, detention basins and such. What you're going to wind up at the end of this, if this is approved, is 6.42 acres of C2 zoning along Van Dyke. He already discussed the master plan, and his discussion of it was accurate, so we'll repeat it. Though I can't answer questions about it if you need to. They have that development impact statement. Anytime you have rezoning to residential that could result in more than 20 units, you need one, and they submitted one. There weren't really any natural features of concern on the site. Does have a large quantity of trees. The removal of those trees would be regulated by 520 in the zoning ordinance, so that's something that they'll have to look at and provide us a report on. They are expecting each home to have a well and the development to be served by the sanitary sewer system. In their narrative, they know that the, they understand the capacity is currently unavailable and not guaranteed by a rezoning for that sanitary sewer. And then they do have a traffic impact statement that indicates, what already been said, that there, if you were to fully develop the commercial property as is, and then add those homes with frontage onto Mellon, you would get a lot more traffic ultimately than what's being proposed here. It is a conditional rezoning. That no street connection to Mellon is an explicit condition, and then he is also offering the berm between commercial and residential as another condition. So that brings us to item 10 in the letter, which is our multi-question test for rezoning requests. Is the proposed zoning consistent with the master plan? Generally, the current zoning is reflective of the future land use map. The planning commission can consider whether a proposed district would constitute a reasonable alternative to the future land use map. The low to medium density category of future land use on the future land use map does include both R1B and R1C. So the request for R1C fits into that, but of course, there's portions that are commercial on the future land use map that are going to residential with this request. So that's where the reasonable alternative question comes in. What impact would the requested zoning have on public services and utilities and natural features? They have that conceptual layout for 34 lots. There aren't really major natural features on the site, watercourses, things like that. And then the, I've already talked about the traffic volumes. Has the applicant provided evidence that the property cannot be developed or used as zoned? Not as such. The commercial property there, of course, has not developed over the course of its being zoned commercial, which is that has only been placed for a substantial amount of time. Site directly abuts residential development in the north and south. So, oh, sorry, I just skipped a question. Is the proposed zoning district and potential land use compatible with surrounding uses? So we are directly abutting residential uses in the north and south, and then across Mellon and Van Dyke. Commercially zoned property along Van Dyke to the north. So really, it's residential against residential here. Will the proposed zoning place a burden on nearby thoroughfares? If so, how would this burden compare with the existing zoning district? As noted in the traffic study, the anticipated traffic volume from what's proposed here would be quite a bit lower than what's currently zoned on the property. Is there other land currently available for this use? We do have some undeveloped R1C zoning in the township. It's not as abundant as undeveloped land zoned R1B, but there is some. Will development of the site under proposed zoning be able to meet zoning district requirements? It does appear that R1C development could meet district requirements on this land. They provided a concept plan that demonstrates that the lots would fit, and you could definitely get the building on the looks to work on that. Is rezoning the best way to address the request, or could the existing zoning district be amended to add the proposed use as a premier or special land use? The R1C and R1B districts are sort of a pyramidal structure to our, are the part of a pyramidal structure for our residential zoning, where as you go from one district to another, the lots get smaller and the density gets tighter. So doing R1C lots and R1B doesn't really fit that pyramidal structure. And then as far as the commercial districts, permitting, you know, single-family residential uses in those districts would pretty significantly compromise the purpose of those commercial districts. So I don't think, address, amending those districts would make a lot of sense here. Has there been a change in circumstances and conditions since adoption of the master plan that would support the proposed change? Notwithstanding that we're looking at an update to the master plan right now, there's been little change to conditions on the ground. The economic conditions in the housing market have changed quite a bit since 2016. And then finally, if you look at whether granting the request would result in the creation of unplanned spot zone. Spot zoning is the process of someone having a small parcel of land for a use classification, totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the single property owner to the detriment of others. That test comes from a Supreme Court case, Rogers versus Billage of Terry Town, and that test also includes these three questions. Is the rezoning request consistent with the master plan for the area? Is the proposed zoning district a logical extension of an existing zoning district in the area? And would approving the request grant a special benefit to the property owner or developer? This doesn't expand an existing district, but R1C is consistent with the limited density of future land use category. It's really the adjustment of the boundary of the residential area that is out of alignment with what's on our future land use map, more than anything. I have provided at the end of the letter, the intent statements for both the R1B and the R1C district, as well as the permitted uses in the R1C district, so that you can get your head around what can happen in those districts other than single-family homes. Really, we're looking at Really, we're looking at, at, uh, at conceptual, you know, site plans as far as the plans that were provided with rezoning are concerned, so I don't think we'll go into too much detail on those. But, um, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Of course, if you have questions from the applicant as well.
Joe, I have a question on this last item J, where you say, not expanding an existing district. R1C district is consistent with a low to moderate density future land use category. So this, I know this property is multiple different things, and it's not all necessarily cut and dried based on lot lines, but it's R1B zoned as it is currently.
The residential portion is currently R1B, yeah. R1B and R1C are both included in the low to moderate density category in the current future land use map.
And, do you have a estimate, Joe? Cause we have a, um... So in item five, you mentioned that the max units on the amount of acreage that they're proposing would, in R1C would be 59, but that's probably more around 40 based on infrastructure. Do you have...
At the most, yeah.
What's that?
At the most, yeah.
Yeah, cause even at the 34, it seems like it's pretty well packed in there. But if it was, if it stayed R1B, you said max 35, did you have an estimate of what that would?
Uh, it's going to be a lot less, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 18, 19. And getting that road in there and doing your required retention just takes up a lot of the land. You kind of, you wind up with a much lower net density in the worst.
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
Joe, like, maybe you can explain this. I'm looking back at the, um, impact statement in the traffic study that was submitted with the proposal that we got in August. And in that, it was trying to compare, uh, the traffic volumes created by residential versus commercial. And they used as an example that a shopping center of 70,000 square feet would generate 24-hour, two-way traffic volume of 2,643. Okay? In the proposal that we've got for tonight, it's setting forth a shopping plaza of 91,000 square feet, which I'm assuming the difference was because of the extra lot there at the end of Cading, um, being included in what they're looking at now. However, now the two-way, 24-hour traffic volume skyrockets to 8,416. And when I try to do the comparison between the basis that they used the last time and the outcome compared to what they're doing now, it doesn't work.
Sure, sure.
It seems like it's older by about 3,000 or 4,000 trips per day.
I am not sure what would have caused the, that level of increase, given that you're hanging about 20,000 square feet of commercial. I don't know if the applicant can shed any light on that.
Because I'm just looking at it, and it seems like this new version is making the traffic issue generated by the commercial and, but just the commercial, like, way, way worse than what they said it was going to be back in July or August.
So we did change, what we did on the first one is I just let the guy do whatever he wanted, because I'm not a traffic consultant. I just hired him and paid him to do the report. But on the second one, he said, well, since we're comparing 12 and a half to six and a half acres, what density should I use for square footage per acre? And what we did was, we looked at Adams Corners, Sheena's Marketplace, and Fiddler's Cove. We took those densities per acre, and we applied that to 12.2 acres and to, um, 6.4 acres. I believe the 6.4 acres yielded about 90,000 square feet, and the other one was like 120 or something like that. I, I remember reading it, and I remember talking about it with him, and then I think he just gets his numbers from a Southeast Michigan Council of Governments thing.
So it was the same engineer? Can I, it was the same traffic engineer?
Yes, it was.
And I think it was Carlos Santiya.
Carlos Santiya.
Who's been here multiple times before. So you're saying what he did the first time was wrong?
I don't know what he did the first time, because I didn't really review the traffic study. I remember the second time he asked me what densities we should use, and we studied the densities of nearby commercial developments to come up with densities, and then applied those to, you know, the numbers traffic consultants use.
Well, what my concern is, is that the same numbers that traffic consultants use should have been available to him back in August.
Mm-hmm.
That's, he answered the question. Thank you.
Are you going to open the public hearing now? Make a motion to open the public hearing at 6:30 PM. A second by Hegelstein is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, public hearing is now open on this matter, so if you're here to speak on the proposed rezoning request, we'd ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address, and please try to keep it around for minutes.
Mike Devens, 70207 Melon. First of all, thank you very much for taking the, the traffic off of Melon Street. The last development down there really tore the roads up and kind of made a mess out of it. Uh, the only two questions I have about that, that plot there, right? A friend of mine owns the six acres or whatever it is right on Melon Street, and it, it's a waterlogged thing. You guys have, I'm sure been out there and taken a look at it. So there's going to be a lot of water going into the retention pond? So where does the water from the retention pond go after it goes into the retention pond? At Deer Park, it goes into a storm sewer system on the, to an easement on the, on the north side of my property. Does this also go into an easement or into a storm sewer that's already there, or what happens to the excess water off the property?
It goes into the, uh, Melon Street ditch, which then flows into the storm sewer system at that, um, community you were just mentioning, the Timbers.
Okay.
And it goes into that detention basin that I hope.
Okay. So there's a plan for how that water leaves there, because it's pretty dramatic.
Yeah.
There's months of the year where you can't even, you know, go back to the back of that property. And then the other question is, when they're doing that retention pond and for the foreseeable time, is the retention pond going in as part of the initial site development before anything else goes in, before roads or anything else goes in?
Yeah, that's the first thing you do. You need the dirt from the retention pond to build the rest of the site.
Okay. So, so construction traffic wouldn't be coming off of Melon Street except possibly during the...
I would agree to zero construction traffic on Melon Street.
Even during the retention pond?
Even during that, because I'll take it all off Van Dyke.
Okay. That would be my, that, that'd be our only concern. We don't, the heavy equipment it would take to do the retention pond, would prefer that to be, you know, coming off of Van Dyke with, along with the rest of the site. Okay. Thank you.
Colleen Devens, 70207 Melon. And I have, you know, you said, did you say that there was no, there wasn't the sewer capacity for the...
Correct. Apparently not.
So, and is there a plan or a fix for that? And what about the wells? We all have really high water tables, and I don't know, you know? And when they started putting them down at the end of the street, there was concern, and then they got that bumped down to 22 or 24, whatever you got down there. And now we're going to add another 32. I just water, worry about water tables and sewer, you know? So, any, anybody got any?
We'll, we'll answer to clarify some of these points. We'll have some of them myself, but...
Okay. Thank you.
I live at 12,001 Cading Road. And I've got several questions here. Nothing was addressed here. I brought this up before. The water, where's the water coming from for them houses back there? Where's the sewers that are ample to handle that subdivision that's going in there? And the traffic flow? You didn't kill Melon Street. They all come off of, off the expressway. They all get off of 32, find their way through the village, and come straight down Melon Street and make a left-hand turn on Cading Road and shoot right straight up to Van Dyke, right there. And you've got an entrance there within probably 25 or 30 feet of Cading Road, if I saw that properly. That just, absolutely, Melon didn't get excused. The front part of Melon is going to get more than ever before. So your traffic that you did is not right. Somebody needs to go back and look at that. You didn't mention it at all in here, what's going to happen there. And I see that traffic, it's so bad now, we can't stand it. And I just see nothing but hell there at the end of that up there to even get out on, on Cading Road on the west side. You're never going to get out up there from the traffic light, because everybody comes off the expressway out here, and they work their way down through, they make a right-hand turn on Melon, they come right up to Cading Road, they bypass motel up there and the traffic light up there, and shoot right down Melon, and shoot right up Cading Road to get out, to go to the markets, the drugstore, and everything else is there, plus the bypass to get to the subdivision over there as well, and down 33 mile road and all that, and up on top of the hill. So we're, you're just dumping more traffic on the front portion of C, of Melon Street and overloading Cading Road to the point where we won't ever get out of our goddamn driveway there. I can see that coming, and you guys haven't addressed it. And I'm more concerned about the sewage coming out of that place. And the water, we're all on wells back there. What's going to be done about the water supply? Are you going to put 23 wells? We can't handle that in there. We're going to lose water. We've seen it happen when they did the development years back here on Melon Street. The people on Melon had to re-drill all their, all their wells, or several people had to re-drill and fix the water problem because of the traffic, of the water being used back there. So is there going to be city water back there? I don't think so. We don't have any out here. And what are you going to do about the safety systems and stuff in the sewer? I already know that sewer system doesn't work properly over there, up in that subdivision on the other side of the shopping area there. Unless they fixed it, they've had nothing but trouble with the sewage over there, and I know it. What's been done about that? What's going to be done about it when you put these 23 houses you're talking about going in there, plus all the storefronts that you're talking about putting up on Main Street or on, on Van Dyke? You guys haven't solved a damn thing since I was here last time. You made it worse if you did anything else. You made it worse.
All right, please address the commission.
I don't see it where it's an improvement over what we looked at last time in here. And that's it. That's all I've got to say. I've had enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on Cading, and I also own the lot at the corner of Cading. I tried to get it rezoned also in different times, you know, different methods. I tried putting it up for sale, even as C1, at a decent price. I didn't get any offers. So I don't know if that has anything to do with the C1 not being usable because of the way it's zoned, and then the lots are even conformed, is definitely a problem. So I would, I, I've had it for a while and tried to get rid of it. I can't get rid of it as it's zoned, so.
I'm Steve Mayfield, and I live at 9602 Cranbrook Court here in Bruce Township. I am the current leaseholder for what used to be Emmett's Energy. And as you may recall, I was here once before because there was a good chance, or a possible chance, that that building wouldn't exist anymore. That's when I talked about that barn up the road, just to jog your memories. I would love to stay where I'm at, which is in that lease home, leased building. Right now, we have a, a proposal where I would actually purchase the six acres of commercial from the Lamardo Home Company. And my intention is to go slow. I'm happy to work with the township on what you believe is good use of that land, but I'll give you my personal input on that. The building that I'm currently leasing, it needs some work. However, there is, I'm not sure that it's a historical building, but it's got some very interesting and very historical type architecture to it, at least the front. The back needs work. There's a building next to it that needs to come down. I would like to invest my personal money as an investment, not only into that building and create something that the community would be happy and proud of, but also go slow on that commercial property itself. I personally don't like the look of the normal strip malls, the normal expansion, and/or an industrial-style buildings in that spot. That, as my knowledge is, used to be a nursery, the land itself, and the majority of the nice quality trees that are on that property are on the six acres. That's the build of the, I think some of the trees that are behind, behind that six acres aren't necessarily some of the nicer trees. And the reason why I want to bring up that is I, my intention would be to do a low-impact type of, uh, community-based, uh, area where you'd have walking paths, some buildings in there that would be a lot like Frontier Town, except more spaced, more interesting, where it could be a community draw, but not to the point where it would be an extension of Fiddler's Cove as an example. I personally don't want to see that. So, um, I wanted to give you some background that, that as it's proposed now, and if we continue down that path, if this is approved, then, uh, there's a great chance that I'd be the owner of the six acres and I'd have some good intentions. I've got some historical background of working with the townships as well. Washington Township, I bought a piece of property at the corner of Powell and 31 Mile. It's two acres, uh, ready to be split into two one-acre parcels. While I was taking the house down, though, I started to think about what the community needs and what would be good there. And, uh, it was clear to me that that side, especially for Washington Township, they don't have green space on the east side of Van Dyke. It's all very good green space on the west side of Van Dyke. So I went back to the township and proposed that they buy that property from me instead of me splitting it for homes and turn that into a park in that area. Sam, the township supervisor, agreed, as did the board, and I hope it's still their intention to make that happen as well. So I have good intentions. I live a mile away from that shop. I love the community, been here a long, long time, and would love to continue to, to do good things for the community. So, um, as far as the traffic study goes, what I would be proposing wouldn't be as large of a demand. And I'm not, um, I'm not in this to make a lot of money. I want to do well, but at the same time, I want something that I'd be proud of to put my name on, so. So that's the intention, so.
Thank you.
My name's John Messing. I also live on Cading, 119...
My name's John Messing. I also live on Kading, 11995. Same concerns as what was raised previously, water. We get standing water in our yards all the time because of the sewage. There's never been a plan to address the sewage of what's going on now, let alone the additional. Traffic has been atrocious in that area. The comments earlier were spot-on. Everybody bypasses in front of the hotel. Our roads are falling apart. They can't be redone. There's nothing in the budget. They come to the homeowners. The latest proposal for that sub that was put in that was sold as detached homes, but essentially they're large condos. The proposal was basically all the homeowners pay for it and they only pay for their frontage, which was disproportionately out of whack. The third concern then again is water itself. We've got people down the street that had to drill new wells because of adding this additional capacity. I'm not sure what it's going to do with us, so. Those are the three main concerns that I haven't seen addressed at all. Aside from I didn't have a time to look or understand the different R1B, R1C. I don't know why it would be mixed. And based on the acreage back there in the half-acre master plan for home sites, I don't know how you're going to fit the density that's in there. There's no way it fits that plan.
Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody coming, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:46 PM. Second by Barnett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. The opposed, nay. Motion carries. Okay, commissioners, just a little questions? Did you have a question for someone?
Yeah, I know Mike Devens.
Okay.
Mike, are you aware of the prior well situation, any specifics about it? The Menco Timbers, when I heard there was some well failure and, and the rumor I heard is that it was related to shallow wells, not deep submersible wells. Do you know anything about that?
You'd have to ask, you'd have to survey the homeowners. I think it was more, I, I heard some people on Kading had problems, but it wasn't in the.
Thank you for your response, but that would be, for me, an interesting data point.
I'm willing to talk about that a little bit, if, if it's okay. I kind of heard two concerns, I think, that I didn't talk about or we haven't talked about yet. One's the wells. The timbers, so the wells out there are very shallow. When we built the home site, homes in the timbers, we actually included iron filters and water softeners in the homes because the water's very hard. The ones in the timbers were like 45 to 60 foot deep, you know? But approved by the county health department. But the, I think the important thing about the wells is, I don't just to get, get to go put in the wells. I have to do a well study with, I'd use McDowell and Associates. They have to submit that to the county. My engineer then has to put his name on it, stamp it, say it's going to work when he submits it to the county. The county then has to look at it. They have to send that up to the state and the state has to approve it, so. If, you know, we don't know that yet at this point. I, I have a pretty high confidence because I had my consultants look at the wells we did in the timbers and apply that data to this, this proposal, and I have a high level of confidence. Do we know that yet? No, but we're at the, you know, the first stage of rezoning, then site planning. That's engineering stuff. But if there in fact is not well capacity there, I won't get the home sites because the state will not approve it.
Is there a similar process for septic as well?
The, so we're, we're intending to be hooked up to the sanitary sewer. And I did hear there is sewer on Mellon Street and we'd hook up to the sewer there. I did hear conversation about the sewer capacity. There is physical sewer capacity available there. And I know that the township is negotiating with the Village of Romeo because the sewage goes into their, their plant about contractual capacity. We feel there's, there's a level of confidence that it'll be worked out based on the historical relationship between Bruce, Romeo, and Washington. And we're okay with taking a little bit of a risk as an organization. So there, there is physical capacity. It's contractual capacity we're talking about when we're talking about the sewer. And that would be subject to, Bruce Township would ultimately be the one that says, hey, we got the actual, extra contractual capacity for the sewer with the Village of Romeo and you can start development.
A question, since you did building in Menco Timbers, that is looked into Romeo Sewer, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and my understanding, the trailer park, at one point, that was a community's septic system which failed. So that is now on Romeo Sewer's wall, correct?
I don't know that. But I, I don't know, I know the timbers is. I don't know if I was around when the trailer park.
I'm pretty sure I'm not positive, but just, you know. I actually shouldn't be sharing something if I'm not positive on it, but I, I think.
I guess bring it back to maybe how it's relevant.
Well, it's just, you know, we got some resident concerns about both well and septic. So I'm just trying to think outside the box and, you know, share some additional information, sir.
If there is no, like if the sewer capacity doesn't pan out.
Then I have a piece of land that I got to hold on to for a while. But we own land now that my grandfather bought, so. You know, we hold, we're landholders. We don't, we don't mind that.
Actually, I have a question about the sewer capacity. If we do negotiate additional sewer capacity with the Village of Romeo, is it first come, first served? Or how do we determine who gets to use it?
Well, you guys have a sewer district. This is in the sewer district. So I would think that the sewer district would get sewer and, you know, other people wouldn't.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely would be in the district. And I do think it is a first come, first served type of thing.
Oh, 156 West Gates is already in mine.
Yeah.
Are you aware of that?
Yes, I am aware of that. Yep, I'm, I'm aware of the, the site plan and the zoning of 156 West Gates.
Do you have?
I'm just wondering about Edgemont.
Edgemont, yes. Edgemont is a, is owned by Lombardo and will be developed by Lombardo. That actually is one of the site plans that got approved before the contractual capacity was out and has reserve capacity at this time.
Is that the one on Miss Becker?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, list. Comments from commissioners?
I got a lot.
Okay, let's hear them.
First, just like to point out a couple pluses of what I see from this revised plan. I do like it that it seems to realign and used to be probably aligned behind the commercial so that it's all even in that general place. It does take care of concern with Mr. Harlow's problem in terms of kind of getting stuck there and being very small and not being successful because, partly because of its size. I have.
He asked a question. So those first two houses that are on the piece that wasn't part of the last, those would enter and exit off of Van Dyke?
Uh, yes.
They might actually.
One of them would come off Kading. One off Kading, one off Van Dyke.
The one to the south might be an outlot more than a part of the.
Yeah, they're really, I don't think either of those are necessarily going to be. Well, one might come off Van Dyke, off, you'd probably put one off my residential street and one off Kading, yeah. But there's one access off Kading now for a commercial use, which I would think is more traffic than a one single home, single family home.
Thank you, sorry.
Okay. In terms of concerns, as I see it, we're still losing somewhere around six acres of commercial. I have concerns about the, the traffic study in terms of the trips generated because it is so, such a blaring difference and so far off that that causes me to question the whole output of it, for lack of better words, in terms of how much worse or how much better traffic is going to be with one type of development or another. Another concern is that we still don't have any evidence whatsoever that the property can't be used as zoned. In fact, we were presented with a, I think it was called a, a test, a test something that showed what it would look like for 16 houses coming out onto Mellon Street. I know it's not your ideal because it, I'm sure there's financials involved in it. But you could do that same thing on the property and put our R1B development going straight out to Van Dyke. I guess that my, some of my concerns beyond that are that I appreciate the type of homes that you build. It's a good reputation. This is nothing about that. But in my estimation, in this location, this is probably one of the worst high-density residential developments that we could add. Because from my perspective, the need is not R1C-sized houses. Our gap is, in my opinion, is in multiple family, namely condominiums. That's just a personal opinion. So what we do by adding R1C is more houses that are primarily going to be families with children. They cause more traffic than a condominium development typically if it's done the right way. In terms of your remarks about the fact that many of the homes surrounding on Kading and or Mellon are closer to the layout or the width of R1C versus R1B as they exist in the residence, or in coordinates today. Most of those are parcels that are grandfathered and have been that way for 50 or more years. When we were presented with the development proposals and rezoning for 156 West Gates, that developer actually tried the exact same, or not tried, presented the exact same type of argument. And it was pretty quickly, through, I believe, Rick, your analysis, that very few of them are outside the parameters and those that are, are, are in fact grandfathered. I just looked back, Rick pulled it up for me, the motion that was made when 156 West Gates, after five years, got approved with probably a dozen or more conditions. There was nothing in that motion that gave any credence to the argument that much of what you're surrounded by is really R1C even though it's zoned R1B. That just, that had no legs. So, and speaking of 156 West Gates, that had multiple conditions. Whereas according to Joe, you offered two, other than of course your basic limitation and the numbers you're putting there. I believe one was that there would be no access on, onto or off of Mellon Street and that a burn between the commercial and residential. At 156 West Gates, there were conditions, albeit not everything people asked for, conditions about some protection of nearby wells that is on most.
Regarding the rezoning from R1B to R1C, I try to look at these things that if I had lived in the area. And the area has been R1B. And I'm just, I hesitate being in support of putting higher density in there. I think the concept isn't moving in the right direction, you know, including Mr. Harlow's property for one. Also limiting the entrance way onto Mellon Street. That's awful lot of concerns. But it gets, it gets a one, the, the, the density as proposed was a deal breaker for me.
Just for information, taking away that C1 for the proposal is a decrease of 21.15% of our commercial. As we know, we're looking at the master plan to potentially, potentially add some of these districts. So to take away from it at this time is questionable to me. Even though I understand that Mr. Harlow's had a hard time selling his property. It's something to consider, is that?
Towards that kind of advantage, I moved into the area in 1973. And I basically see no change in that area. I mean, it's other dwell, I mean, the Fiddler's Cove. That's where she lives, right? And that was really the only type change that, yeah, you know, it's a mixed bag. I mean, the demand for brick and order, especially in the past eight, 12 years. And with the advent of Amazon, there hasn't been as much demand for it. It doesn't mean we should give up commercial. But in, in order for this proposal to go through, I, I think, the flip side of it, the only way I would be in support of any density over there in any, any project, it would have to come in off of Van Dyke. And I'd be, I'd be willing to, excuse me for interrupting, but I'd be willing to be in support of sacrificing what I consider to be a reasonable amount of commercial from that area. So this is my personal thoughts.
I'm, I'm trying to agree on that. I think the, they could develop that R1B on the Kading without any approval. So I, I agree with what you're saying. I like, there's a part of this that dumping out on Van Dyke, I think alleviates some of the concerns we heard the last time this was done because there was a big turnout from the residents on Mellon and Kading just around the impact that the timbers has caused. But I think if we want that, we probably have to give something up in return. Because otherwise they could just go build this. So. It's kind of. Thank you, boys.
Yeah, but for clarification, the, the developer could build R1B with a Mellon entrance that shows which does what? 14, 14 homes, and that would be with an entrance off Mellon. And that would be a permitted R1B land use. They would not need, need to come before us.
With no change in the zoning district at all. It keeps the commercial jutting further east than really it probably should, yeah.
Gerald, if I could, get some, what I'm seeing for why this particular kind of density is concerning to me. And I do agree, there are, you know, get something, give something in terms of not going out on the Mellon Street. But I'm looking at broader than just Mellon Street or Cading. We have your own property that you own, Edgemont, that's, you know, ready to go. I think you're somewhere about how many, thirty-five, forty houses got approved for?
I believe it's forty-seven.
Forty-seven.
This R1B, correct?
Straight R1B.
I understand R1B, but all those cars coming out of that place are, if they want to go south, they're going to be coming right here. And it's, it's traffic coming into the area, again, I'm looking at a bigger circle, kind of like a triangle from the end of the expressway down to, just past here. We've got the timbers, which is approved, now that's more houses that are added there. We've got 156 West Gates, although it will definitely drive less traffic because they're condominium, they're still going to be up here. No plan yet that I've seen, but we've got, um, the property, um, statewide at the end of Van Dyke before the expressway, which is three quarters of a mile from what you're talking about and, uh, that's a big chunk of property as well. So it's like a, a confluence of things and that is something that I feel I have to think about in terms of saying, is this the kind of density we want to add in this particular area?
Do you, do you want me to address any of this yet or wait till you guys are done?
Oh, just a second.
Okay.
This is one, um, I was thinking when I read was talking, I mean, when you were here before, you got a straight seven zero recommendation of order for denial. So you're back with a new application, paid another application fee. And, um, I think this proposal you have is much closer to what I personally would be able to get behind in its current condition. I cannot get behind it. Why? Why?
I ask the question, why? What, what?
Density is the big issue. Although we don't have the attendance tonight that we did during the last public hearing, I mean, the two big issues that I recall were entrance dock with Mellon and the other was density. So, um, you know, people, it made comments that, you know, they've made an investment in that area, uh, understanding when they know that, um, you know, it was R1B and it would remain R1B. So, um, I'm trying to take a look at it if I live, especially along the north side of Cading and just were going to be behind me, how I would feel about it personally.
What's the, I should probably step up here. Anthony Lombardo, one three zero zero one twenty-three, Mall Road. What's the density you'd like to see?
Density? I'm not sure procedurally, if it, uh, procedurally correct suggesting what I would like to see. Where's that line of demarcation, Joe? Is that it technically it should come from a condition that the developer is suggesting to us, right?
Well, I mean, if you're looking for a condition on a rezoning, yes, that would have to be voluntarily, uh, offered by the applicant. I mean, in terms of the general question, um, if you're in so many districts that are in ordinance and this density is being impacted to the next level of density that's in the ordinance is the current zone.
So, if you all know what the, the differences, R1C is eighty-foot frontage, twelve thousand square foot lots. R1B is a hundred-foot minimum frontage, twenty thousand, um, square foot minimum size lots. So, what I'm getting at, the, the question I just asked, Joe, you know, we see this stuff on TV, quote unquote, leading the witness. So, you know, we are here, as I understand it, to basically, uh, consider stipulations that the developer, Mr. Lombardo, you've been doing this for decades.
He's, he's taken over one day, so just so you know.
He's doing a great job, but I mean, you know, you've got a, a great reputation in the community. I own a hundred of those, that's worth it. But, um, I, I think there may be a mechanism that they can do this, which is a less formal environment to have a give and take dialogue to, uh, to work through some of our differences. But again, my understanding is that, that should be something that if you were interested in doing, that would be at your request.
Do you want to say anything?
Do you guys have any other comments? I, I kind of wrote down the number of things and I'm ready to address them as long as none of the other commissioners.
Any other comments? Sorry for me, but.
No, I'm new at this, uh, obviously, uh, not obviously, but I think I agree with, uh, with Rick and, uh, and Marie have to say about density, I, I, that would be a concern for me as well. I do like the fact that it is coming off of Van Dyke and, uh, it's probably not anything for this group, but it's possible maybe that the residents of Cading Street and Mellon could request a no-through traffic situation to alleviate their concerns with people cutting through there, but I don't think that's not for us.
Okay, so, um, a number of things, I kind of wrote down what, what I saw in here. One was losing six acres of commercial. Two was the traffic study accuracy. Three is that the property can be used as zoned. You talked about the lots on Mellon and Cading, even though they are, the small size being grandfathered, um, the density and, and the density in general. So, to start out with losing six acres of commercial, um, even Mrs. Boyce said, the commercial line right now, I wish I had the site plan up, it, it goes like, if this is Van Dyke and this is the back of Sheena's marketplace, the commercials only goes another hundred feet or so back to where, if it was developed as it is today, there'd probably be, you know, a half a dozen residents in Menko Timbers and three or four more on Cading that are going to end up with a curb and a loading dock in their backyard, um, just because of the way the, the lines are lined up, they're, they're strangely lined up. And then the other reason that we're losing some more acres of commercial is to have an access to Van Dyke, another big concern of the residents. So, the, you, the six acres of commercial you see you're losing are lost by lining up those zoning lines where if you look at it, it really should be straight up and down where it's residential to commercial, not residential, commercial, residential, and actually getting an access to Van Dyke rather than Mellon due to the concerns of the residents about traffic on Mellon. As far as the traffic study accuracy, you know, I, unfortunately, I'm not a traffic engineer, maybe I should have had Carlos here tonight. I, I do think that in general though, um, you know, the, the boost in residential density versus getting rid of six acres of commercial use is significantly less traffic. For the grandfathered lots on Mellon and Cading, I wasn't trying to make the argument that we're in any way entitled to a rezoning because of that. I was just trying to put in scope that the existing land uses, what I'm proposing is not inconsistent with the existing lot sizes and land uses. It's very consistent with the existing lot sizes and land uses that are surrounding the property. So, a couple of things, I did hear some talk about architecture, um, and, and things like that. I do imagine this a, a community for families with children. I grew up in Washington Township, I rode my bike all the time to downtown Romeo. When I, when I saw this property come, I was excited because I grew up going to downtown Romeo, going to Vera's, you know, and Dairy Queen with my sister and, um, you know, uh, trick or treating on, uh, Tilson Street. I enjoyed that and I hope that when these homes are built, other families can enjoy that the same way I did. But just to have some concerns about the architecture, another couple, um, um, conditions I'm willing to offer just based on some of the things I've heard about some of the other homes I've built. I'd be willing to offer minimum size garages of twenty-two foot by twenty-two foot, that's a two-foot extension, I offer those on my homes, and also offer them all side entry. So, the way these blocks lay out, my home sites are ninety feet wide anyway, they can't really be eighty because they don't lay out quite right. And I'm willing to go to a hundred-foot of frontage too because most of them are close to that, the way the blocks lay out. So that's just a few things that I'm, I'm willing to offer as additional conditions if it makes it feel a little better. There's a little bit of architectural control there, larger garages, um, th- things like that.
Question for you, what's your proposed lot size?
The lot size right now are generally like ninety by one thirty. And the reason is because I have a bank of, you know, I have a road and another road and so the eighty by one fifty doesn't fit, there's not enough north and south distance. So right now they're ninety by one thirty, I would go to a hundred by one thirty, um, make them a little bit larger.
They're eleven thousand seven hundred square feet, ninety by one thirty?
They're twelve thousand, so they're ninety by one thirty-one or something, but, you know.
What would that do to the number of units?
Take it down, I have to, if you'll excuse me, um, it'll be nine, it's nine over ten times thirty-four, times thirty-four. It'd get it down to probably thirty-one units. It'd probably push it down to thirty, I, I, it came up to thirty point six, but you'd probably be able to figure out the slop in the blocks to get thirty-one. So the frontage, you know, I, I think one thing to think about, the frontage, if you're driving down the street, you don't necessarily notice how deep lots are. The frontage would be the same as R1B, the, the road layout would look like an R1B development. And I have laid it out with R1B with the same zoning districts and the, the challenge is you can't get a block to go around like a square. Actually, if I could go back to my site plan, I'll show you kind of the reasons, it's tough to do R1B.
While you're pulling that up, um, I'm looking at some data points here, on the north side of Cading, uh, those lots are, uh, two sixty-six to three oh eight.
Yeah, those are very deep lots.
Yeah.
The ones on Cading are very deep.
Yeah.
These ones are generally seventy-five by one fifty, one eighty, something like that.
But of those lots, you know, the smallest frontage is sixty and the largest is one forty. So, and another data point I want to share here, it looks like the last time that a, the Westport, that a, um, lot improvement was constructed over on the north side of Mellon, not complying with, um, both frontage and minimum lot size requirement was nineteen ninety-nine, it was twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, so one of the reasons, if you lay this out with the same thing as R1B, these lots have to get deeper and you can't get this layout. I like this layout, it's in, it's a block, it's out. R1B, I got to get much deeper, so it's a cul-de-sac, a cul-de-sac and a half cul-de-sac because you can't, you can't fit a block. You know, without connecting to Mellon, which I knew was a non-starter, you can't fit an actual block of lots, you have to have cul-de-sacs and half cul-de-sacs. It's not nearly as, uh, pretty of a layout, I guess you could say. I did lay it out that way, you can get twenty units in that same area with R1B, but only by connecting both to Van Dyke and Mellon.
Fire code?
The fire code, we're good because we got thirty-four, three of the lots have.
R1B, that is a Mellon.
Yeah. Yeah, you do, because you have, you, yeah, you're right, cul-de-sac length, you can't, if you did R1B, you have to have at least a fire access to Mellon, at the very least, because you can only have eight hundred feet of cul-de-sac length. So I can't have a, you know, twelve hundred foot cul-de-sac, the fire code restricts that. You have to connect to Mellon.
Connect to Mellon.
But then would that be gated access?
Potentially, it depends on what the fire marshal would allow.
I, I've seen that in Washington Township.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Bray Township, it'd be over by twenty-seven mile of the Mall.
Yeah.
They've got some gated access over there.
Yeah, we've built them before and sometimes they end up getting used anyway, but, um, either way, you, my, my father's correct, you need a block and there's really no way to get a block when the lots have to be a hundred and fifty to two hundred feet deep. I already made these lots wider than they have to be to fit these blocks and I'm willing to go wider, I'm willing to go to a hundred feet rather than the ninety-ish that they are right now to make the blocks work.
How many, what was the depth?
Hundred and thirty-ish. Now, like, so it's a little, like, these are a hundred and thirty down this block, these are actually a hundred and fifty down this block, so, where, you know, the property juts out a little bit.
Can extend the lots in the pond and do a pond too. You play the game, right?
Yeah.
Cosmo, can you just kind of run down the proposed conditions that you've thrown out there?
Yes, so, um, there's the proposed, proposed conditions I already started with. No connection to Mellon Street. Second is a berm between the commercial and the residential, and I do think that's important because the, the commercial line goes back here right now. And you're talking about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight residents that, you know, have some sort of, I mean, I imagine that's back a shop, that's a curb and a loading dock.
If you're interrupting, but I believe it's a code requirement that when there's, we change zoning districts, that there is a, you don't, zoning districts that a bumper zone, berms required?
Yes.
Okay, so I would, it's probably a requirement anyway, but I would build a landscaped berm there and make it very nice so that the residents that will be here, the residents that are there now would not have to see, you know, for example, like the back of, of the Sheena's, Sheena's marketplace. The third one would be minimum twenty-two foot by twenty-two foot garages. The fourth would be that they would all be side entry garages, not front entry. And the fifth would be that the lots would be a minimum one hundred feet in frontage, consistent with the R1B zoning district.
In terms of what he's described for, well, let me ask a question first, for the area of Manhattan that he is proposing would be residential, what he's got up there? Did you, I can't find it in here, did you say how many roughly R1B-sized houses could fit in there?
Well, I mean, I have the gross density that you can get on that kind of acreage, assuming that you were just splitting up all the land.
Yeah.
You have to assume that you're not going to get a lot of that because of the roads and things. So, as a guess, I would say probably eighteen-ish.
Eighteen-ish?
Yeah.
And can you confirm what Cosmo just said, that to put the eighteen in, that it would have to have a access to Mellon Street?
Well, I can't, I mean, without actually like pulling out a rule and doing all the measurements, I can't a hundred percent confirm that, but I do think it's correct, just given what we know about what we're seeing up here, the size of these lots, the, um, things you'd have to move around to change the size of the lots to the R1B. Yeah, you'd wind up with some sort of cul-de-sac situation and our ordinance does limit the distance of cul-de-sac. So, most likely, yeah, you're looking at some sort of secondary access at that point.
Emergency purposes, right?
Right, so it'd be a.
Yeah, the minimum for emergency purposes.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know what the fire department would say about gating it or not, but.
I'd certainly, like to give cheap, negative, an opportunity to weigh in specifically what the township's requirements are, I mean, I have.
Well, we're not going to hold the decision.
Can I?
We'll, we'll make a decision one day.
Can I ask you one question, Joe? So, I, basically you're thinking twenty, or eighteen maybe?
Something like that.
Right, knowing that it would likely demand an access out on the Mellon Street.
Right.
So, the difference I think we're looking at is.
So what's the house one hundred foot wide?
Thirty to thirty-one, I did quick math, it came out to thirty point six. I rounded it up because we'll probably figure something out.
Twelve to thirteen, I think.
It's about a difference of twelve.
Twelve to thirteen. Twelve to thirteen homes.
I would say, let's say ten to fourteen, as an example, because we don't know exactly, but it's somewhere in that range.
I, I did do a layout, because I just, and I couldn't make it work without connecting to Mellon. It came out to twenty home sites, with connecting to Mellon.
So, I have my ten to fourteen, you know, probably about.
It's in there. Yeah, it's in there.
It's somewhere in there. That's the difference between R one B and R one C.
Okay, mister, we've had a good discussion here. I think we've heard a lot of comments around some of the pros, some of the cons. I shared a lot of those. Then, as you've heard, the developers are proposing some additional conditions, I think, some of which are helping to address some of the density concerns. I guess the question is, will we need a motion to determine if we're gonna move this forward, or for recommendation to approve, or recommendation to deny to the board? Does anybody feel on a motion?
Actually, we've got three ways for developers. A third option, but. Third option, maybe, the op, a motion to approve, motion to deny, promotion to table, pending further discussions. And how we've accomplished that in the past is we had subgroups work with a developer, multiple, if you know, Jared, through multiple planning commissioners, can't exceed three to avoid violation of the Open Meetings Act. I've been a part of a few of those, they worked out very well. If the developer were interested in exploring that with a township, I would volunteer my time as one to be a part of the subgroup. I'd love to see two others from the planning commission. So it's, we've got a breadth, breadth of, of ideas, not just mine.
Right. Correct you on that, that would be something that the developer would have to be amenable to.
That's fair, yes.
I, I am amenable to that. We are under some, some timeline restrictions with, with the properties. I'll have to get extensions on from, you know, all, all four property owners. Don't know if I can do that, and I'm willing to do it. I just, it's one thing to understand that with everything that's going on here, the non-connection to Van Dyke, the several conditions I've offered, if I can't hold on to it, I don't know what you'll get. I mean, it would probably be something like the fourteen lots on, off Mellon. I, I am open to that, and I'm, but I don't know that I have the ability to hold on to the land.
Well, following that, if your investors were not in agreement, then regardless, the next opportunity we would have to submit a motion would be in January. But between now and then, we would have an opportunity to meet with a subgroup.
Yep.
Hopefully, very soon.
Yeah.
To see what direction this may be heading.
Yeah, the only way I would support tabling, or postponing this, is if it comes back in January, because I don't, we already had it once, I, I don't want to keep piling up things. And I guess the question is, what, do we think there's something materially that's gonna change that would impact our decision to approve or deny, based on that?
I think there's an opportunity to, I mean, I'm not sure if I even want to use the word approve, just to have a discussion, to try and have confidence that whatever subgroup comes back to recommend to the board, or just the higher level, have confidence with it. And I don't have that level of confidence right now that, um.
Can you get the extensions?
The board would be happy for us as, as good as it could be. I think it's very close. Close side is the Lombarde second application. If we don't do this, a motion to deny, and other applications, we'd likely lose investors.
So, it's really, we lost, we have, it's the landholding part of it. People are selling us the land. We have to get extensions for them to negotiate and do what we need to do. But just to be clear, if we're gonna have access to Van Dyke, it'll be very similar to this, we're just gonna talk about density in general. Other than that, you could develop the land off Mellon and get fourteen lots?
Fourteen lots, if, yeah, if you just.
It is what it is, right? And then the commercial, we know what commercial's doing. You had mentioned it, right? At the end of the day, the commercial business has changed since Amazon and Google and all that, right? So, the demand's not necessarily in the commercial as much as it used to be, right? We used to go shopping at stores, we don't anymore.
Lakeside's being too much for it now.
Lakeside, even Somerset, if you go there, I mean, now it's busy because of the holidays, but they're not that busy. So in general, if we're gonna do that, my son's gotta go get extensions, hopefully he can. But generally, this is the layout I would expect if you expect us to access Van Dyke. Right? To be clear.
I, I think the word that is in the back of my mind right now is close. I think we're very, very close.
We just gotta get.
And then that's, that's my personal recommendation. I, I was one of them.
Right, we, Friday's our deadline in some of them, so.
Friday's our deadline in all three, but.
What day, what day, Wednesday.
Sometimes you gotta figure it out, you know.
We're gonna figure it out. If you do that, we don't have a problem with it. But I want to set the tone when we go into the meeting. The expectation is generally this layout? Talk about density.
I, I believe so. Personally, I think that's the preferred layout.
Okay, good. So we clear, and then we go into that meeting.
Absolutely.
My son, I won't be there, my son will.
Yeah, that's fair. Trying to work together, not.
Absolutely.
Not throw Cosmo.
I've been in this township many, many, many years. We've always done that.
So, I'm, I'm retired, I'm available. I mean, there are other planning committee members that are still working, a few of them full-time, one part-time, three of us are retired.
So before we get to who would be on it, is this something you want to pursue? I think.
Yeah, we, we'll do.
We're willing to pursue it. Yes, we are. Hearing, hearing Commissioner Hagelstein say, say that we're close, we wouldn't want to go to that meeting and say, hey, redo the whole thing, you know? Because then, but if, if we are close, it's something we're very interested in. We want to be partners in the communities, communities we work in. I grew up in this area, I like this area, and I want to work with you guys.
Another thing that I like to share, you know, to give, it's appropriate to give. I mean, we're giving to you, we're looking, what we can get back to the benefit of the residents of Bruce Township, especially those that live close by, so.
Sheriff, when we've had a kind of a working group like this in the past, was the trustee liaison part of the committee?
Was Mike Trump, he was here?
Yeah.
Yes, I, I recall, I wasn't on the commission.
I don't think it was a requirement, but Mike was very knowledgeable in all things Bruce Township, so that may also be the reason he was part of that.
Well, I mean, they prob, I have to assume that was probably because he also had some sense of how his, how the board would, you know, be receptive to some of these things, because ultimately, they are the deciders.
Sure.
All right, so I think there's a leaning towards a motion. Does somebody, well, I guess if we're moving in that direction, someone should make a motion, and then we should, to tell whether they're gonna be on that subcommittee.
Okay. Feel free to chime in, but I'd like to make a motion to table the resonia request presented by Lombarde Homes for the C one, C two, and existing R one B property north of Kating Street and west of Mellon and east of Van Dyke, and, you know, pending a subcommittee discussion to follow with members that committee yet to be identified.
Can we put a date on it?
Yeah, the, the, the decision, final decision will be made during the January Planning Commission meeting. And the, we do have holidays coming up, I'm pretty flexible, and, you know, basically Thursday is a generally bad day, but other than that, I'm available.
All right, second of the motion.
Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion?
Oh, sorry.
A motion by Hagelstein, is that what I can't? Is there any other discussion? Carrie, now Dana, would you call it off?
Voice?
Yes.
Dave Vincent?
Yes.
Jared Vincent?
Yes.
Mandy Barnett?
Yes.
Randy Kent?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. So let's identify two or three people from the commission that can be part of this. Rick is the volunteer at the time. Anybody else like to be part of this?
I certainly can. I'm retired as well.
Well, if there's a participation, I would be on the patients.
All right, well, I'll, I will try to attend as well, so put me on the subcommittee. So, trustee Vincent, Commissioner Vincent, and Commissioner Hagelstein. And then Rick, can you help coordinate with Cosmo the, the member?
Should I reach out to Dana during the week, or do you want me to reach out to, to you, Rick?
I think it's best to coordinate through a single.
Yeah, Dana can you coordinate that?
Yeah. I'll call you tomorrow or Friday.
Yeah, reach out tomorrow if you can, because I do want to get this going.
Okay, I'll call Dana tomorrow.
And Dave, you're retired, so your eligibility is pretty flexible.
I'm pretty flexible.
Hey, so you got, is your story, Jared, you, you're.
I'll, I'll do what I can, yeah. All right. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's see. It's hot. Okay, so I'll reach out tomorrow. All right, we're gonna take a five-minute break at seven thirty-six P M. Forty-three P M. Do you want to clarify, Dana, Joe and I discussed after the fact of that, we need to clean up the language. We, we said we were tabling that. Technically, tabling means we're gonna come back to it in the same meeting. So we need to update that verbiage to say we're postponing it for one month. So, just for clarification going forward, if we're gonna talk about it again in the same meeting, it should be tabled. If we're gonna talk, move it to a future Planning Commission meeting, we should postpone it.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. All right, that takes us to item eight A, which is. All right, uh, that takes us to item eight A, which is our review of the Queensland Development Final Condo Review.
Right, I'll take this one right off the bat here.
Thank you.
So as you are, some of you are aware, some of you probably haven't actually been through the site condo process in the past. Um, it proceeds in a couple of different stages. First, they get preliminary approval, which is basically approval for the layout. They'll then go through engineering review, where they get things refined, and they get the locations of the utilities in place to figure out all their grading. If there are any necessary boundary adjustments on the lots and the layout, they'll make those at that time, and then they come back for final. Typically, the plan that you're looking at at final is gonna be pretty similar to what you looked at at preliminary. Uh, if there are substantial changes, then obviously that's something that you look at and you make sure that you're still okay with it. Um, and it still meets your ordinances, which is really the fundamental thing. In this case, we're looking at Queensland Estates, um, as a nine-lot residential subdivision on thirty-one acres. A lot of that land was set aside because it was not buildable. It's wetland. Um, the lots range in size from one point two-five to one point nine-eight acres, and they all front on a proposed private road called the Mila D Drive. The, uh, buildable areas on the lots were drawn to provide a twenty-five-foot buffer from the documented edge of the wetlands.
Oh, man.
And again, they left a lot of it as a common element to preserve those wetlands. Preliminary condo appro- approval occurred in twenty twenty-three. They've made it through engineering review, so now they're back here for their final. Uh, final is actually a two-stage process itself. Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the board, and the board has the final approval authority there. This is a vacant site. Uh, it's surrounded by R-one and R-one As and wings. Uh, and some of that is vacant as well, but there are single-family homes on those as well also. Forty thousand square foot lots, they're well above that. Um, a hundred twenty-five foot lot widths. Uh, the narrowest lot is a hundred and twenty-five. That's one of the ones on the per, uh, and the rest are over. Uh, there is a little bit of wetland on pretty much everything here, um, but they've drawn all of their, um, lot lines and, um, building envelopes to respect that wetland and our twenty-five-foot, uh, wetland buffer requirement. When we look at condominium design, uh, they'll be paying into our sidewalk fund because they don't have sidewalks. Uh, they wouldn't be connecting to anything here, so, um, they have the correct way-to-way width and, um, cul-de-sac radius. The, uh, distance limit for a cul-de-sac, uh, was actually waived here to allow for the eight hundred and ten feet fires and all that as well. They've got, um, some street trees to plant that are aware. Um, and then they provided all the information that needs to be provided at preliminary as well as final approval. Um, I've been through the plan. Um, again, they've been through engineering. The plan that was approved, uh, that is before you now is substantially similar to the preliminary plan. Uh, one thing that, uh, should be noted is that they did receive a couple of variances, um, from the Z B A. Uh, and that is for, um, the way the, uh, building envelopes laid out on a couple of the lots that are significantly impacted by, uh, wetlands. I think you all received a copy of those.
We did.
Okay. Uh, so, um, those variances are in place. Uh, they've been granted. And, um, you know, we recommend that the, uh, final, uh, plan be recommended for approval to the township board, because this meets all our ordinances and it's, again, substantially similar to the preliminary plan.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Any questions for Joe? And, uh, any of his summary of findings or any questions at all on the developments?
There's a cap about no sidewalks were shown on the plan.
Right, there's a, they're gonna be paying into the fund for that, because they're not, they wouldn't have sidewalks to connect to here.
Okay.
Um, so that's the, that's the alternative to installing sidewalks.
Joe?
Okay, go for it.
Your, item seven on your, uh, document says that tr- the street trees must be addressed at final approval. Is, is this final approval?
Uh, it is, yeah. Um, they actually, come on, sorry. They actually, uh, have addressed that, um, at this point. So I can kind of amend that note to say it is, it has been addressed on the plans.
So you've seen an updated document that says?
You can, I think you could include in your motion that, um, they'll be meeting that standard as a condition of your approval.
Okay. Also, I noticed, and this is new for me, I see the reading a minute through the Z B A that they put, uh, I guess there would be, uh, a few conditions on their approval. Something about the variance being on master deed outlines the restrictions with regard to the wetlands. And also, uh, that the homeowners association be required to place signage that can be changed mark the wetland areas. Is that something that we need to require as well in our recommendation for a final approval? Or is this sufficient what the Z B A did?
So it is sufficient what the Z B A did. You could reference the Z B A and just note that you are including their conditions in your motion. Uh, and then that is subject to attorney review, the, uh, master deed, so, um, at which I believe the attorney is conducting or has conducted already, so.
So it sounds like a, a recommendation for approval then, assuming there are additional questions, but so far we would have, uh, a condition that the developer, uh, pay into the township fund and move the pedestrian walkways.
Yes.
And the trees are taken care of now. So I think the other one would be, uh, is that, um, a recommendation for approval would be conditioned on, uh, the developer, um, following or acting consistently with the conditions set forth by the Z B A.
Yes. Those are your three conditions, huh?
All right, any other questions for Joe? Or if not, would anybody like to make an attempt at the motion?
Randy, you made the one last time, don't you, didn't you?
All right. Um, I think a motion that we approve the, uh, final site plan for parcel one four zero one two two one zero 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 five five, for Mike Demelt. Yes, presented with the conditions of the, uh, the trees be taken, be taken care of, uh, money be put into the sidewalk plan, and then all the conditions are put by the Z B A.
We're recommending approval.
Recommend approval.
Yep.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by Kent, uh, seconded by trustee Vincent. Any other discussion before we vote? If not, Dana, just call the roll, please.
Barnett?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Jared Vincent?
Yes.
Voice?
Yes.
Dave Vincent?
Yes.
Hegelstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yay, thank you, guys.
Started a little long way.
Hey, no problem at all. I got you. Good listening, man. Never learned.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike, you too.
I was in a, uh, planning commission meeting in Farmington Hills last month that went about four hours and had about three hundred people in the room. And we got to the end of the meeting and the last agenda item, and there was one person still sitting in the audience, and it was the guy who was there for that item. It was quite a night for him.
Yes, indeed. All right, uh, moving along then on the agenda, item nine is communications. I don't believe there are communications. Uh, so we'll move on to item ten. Uh, A is our master plan discussion. Commissioners, we've all received some updated info from Joe. Joe, we will turn it over to you to, uh, continue on this discussion.
Okay, so, uh, double the little verbiage of the maps this time. I gave you some, uh, follow-up maps. Uh, that you can zoom in on the primary areas of discussion. And, uh, try to give you some sense of the amount of land that we're talking about here. And then on it, you now have aerials, um, showing, and some of them are a little bit out of date because the Macaulay County records are in, are stuck in twenty twenty-two. They haven't updated them since then. Uh, so if we do get twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-three imagery anytime soon, we will update those, um, but we don't have it yet. So we will use these maps during our discussion, but, um, I also did a lot of very, um, granular work trying to parse out exactly how much acreage there was of everything. And, uh, Anne Marie had provided some, uh, helpful documents, uh, earlier on in this process that, that I was able to check against. But, um, basically, I've broken down the land that we're talking about in several different ways. Land occupied but by, but not, um, zoned commercial. Land occupied by industrial uses. Land zoned for commercial uses, and land zoned for industrial uses, land master planned for commercial uses, and land master planned for industrial uses. So, um, we've got three different categories that don't all perfectly align there. Because we do have commercial uses and industrial uses, not on land zoned, commercial and industrial. And then we've got land that's zoned commercial and industrial that has other occupancies on it. And then our planned commercial and industrial areas largely line up with our zoning, but not entirely. So, um, I tried to provide some, some, uh, tables here that break it down in a useful way. So when we look at the first two categories, um, the current zoning versus future land use acreage, um, rounded to the nearest acre, I'm not gonna get into point three-five acres of this or that. Uh, I've, I've got a table here that kind of breaks down what's there and what's actually available. So in the, when we look at the O-one district, which is our office zoning, we have about nine total acres currently zoned for that use on our zoning map. About five of that is vacant, and then one is occupied by another use that happens to be a house. When we look at C-one, we have about ten acres. Eight of that is vacant, uh, that it, I'm including a functionally vacant parcel at thirty-five mile and M fifty-three, uh, in that that has, it's got one small building that you couldn't really do much with it. So functionally, that's a vacant commercial property. Um, and then we have two acres that are occupied by another use. And then, uh, when we look at C-two zoning, we have forty-six acres, twenty-three is vacant. Uh, that doesn't include four point eight acres that were recently approved for commercial development at thirty-three in McCauley. We're assuming that's gonna get built, so I'm not counting that as vacant. Um, and then we don't have any of that land that's occupied by another use, so it's all, all the vacant land there is available. We don't have any acres of C-three on our zoning map. And then when we get into the industrial categories, um, the I R O, we have ninety-eight acres and all of it's vacant, and none of it is occupied by other uses. Uh, in L I one, we have five hundred eighty-nine acres. A hundred eighty-eight comes up as vacant, and sixty-six is occupied by another use. Uh, I did not include the power line corridor that has industrially zoning, industrial zoning on our map in that total acreage figure, because you can't really use it for that purpose, so I didn't think it made sense to include it in the acreage total. And then the other thing to keep in mind is that when we're looking at the vacant land, that's not gonna include land that appears to be in use but is also underutilized. So for instance, when you look at, um, when you go up M fifty-three to the area around thirty-four miles, you have all that industrial land there. There's a mix of I R O and L I one zoning there. There's a, uh, very large parcel, um, sixty-five acres that is, you know, partially occupied. They could split that off and sell some of it, and you'd have additional land available. But it's really hard to factor that into all these acre summaries, because it is technically occupied land, right? So I just wanted to be clear that there is some, um, some other land that could potentially become available, uh, just because it is on a lot that is, um, not fully used or fully occupied, um, but is partially occupied now, and it's, it's just hard to factor in. Um, for the L I one district, a breakdown of overall acreages and approved site plans for the Corey and Beaver Creek subdivisions is provided, just because those are two subs that have been filling in. And in the county data set, the individual lots don't show up, and they've all started building in the last couple of years, so the aerials don't show them either. So I went back and I looked at all the site plans that have been approved in those two subdivisions. If you look at the, uh, Corey Road subdivision, there's nine units in there. Uh, twenty-seven total acres. There are zero acres with no approved plan on them. All nine lots have had something been approved on them. So that one is gone. Uh, the Schaefer Beaver Creek Drive one has twenty-four units in it. There are forty-four total acres, and there are twenty-seven of those acres are still available. So we have twenty-seven acres in a, um, industrial site condominium on Beaver Creek Drive that are still available. Um, and that's included in the acreage total, um, and the vacant land total in the table above that. I just wanted to be clear that that's how that broke down.
Where is Ford?
Uh, what, what?
Where, where in the current zoning have you accounted for the proving ground?
The proving ground is not included in here. It is a sui generis use that is, it, it uses six square miles of land. There is nothing else like it. There will not be anything else like it, so it is simply not addressed in the totals. Um, and in the text of the plan, I'll make sure to be clear about that. But it is, it is very much its own thing, and, um, it's, there are always outliers, um, and in this case, that's an outlier.
So tell, if, we know Ford is really zoned R S.
That's correct.
That's operating as a very out-there industrial use. Where, when we have things also in R S like the, um, golf courses or the driving range, can you just confirm, which are essentially commercial use, recreational, commercial, are they in here at all?
They're not in here. Um, so the golf course, or the, sorry, driving range, uh, that is actually a, um, So the golf course, or the, sorry, driving range, that is actually a special land use map, just for.
Correct.
So it, it, it stays there regardless of that current zoning.
Correct.
So that's not included in here. I didn't include the medical facility either. Basically, I, I didn't really include, in this table anyway, the uses that are commercial and otherwise that are outside of these, these zones for this purpose of this table.
Okay, so we'll get to that, what we're going to do with those, or how to consider them at a lateral point?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, they're kind of their own thing. Because they're fulfilling some demand, right, but they're not in the zone, future land use planning scheme at this point. When we look at the future land use map and we do that same analysis on it, we find that we've got a little less land, land industrial than we have actually in use. That's primarily due to the claim designation for some land that's on the west side of M fifty-three. If you look at the zoomed-in map that shows the southeast corner of the township, is this triangle right here? That is not future land use plan for industrial, but has an industrial designation right now. You can see it here, that twenty-two point two seven acres right there is industrial at the moment. That's one of the main differences between those two totals.
So that's future land use as residential?
Is future? Yes, is future land use as multifamily.
They have a little bit of.
I've got a question about that because that was industrial for the longest time. Then, I forget, it was Michi, Michi something, Michibey? This was about probably ten or more years ago. They requested to resubmit to residential. Then the plant, it got approved. Then the plans fell through, and it got reverted to, I actually think it was another decision to change it back. Right, so what do we want it to be? Because it seems like currently we want it to be industrial, which makes sense because it's along the expressway.
That's what you can hear now, yeah.
Right, well, that, that's a question I was asking myself, and I'm bringing it up because you just raised it, is why are we switching it to something back to residential?
Yeah, well, we're not. That's a decision that we're going to have to make, the current future land use.
Correct. I mean, I'm wondering why the thinking was to change it back to residential when at least my term, like, early on, and why he brought this whole thing up was some concern about, you know, having lost so much rest, or industrial over time, are we keeping the right now?
Sure.
And to me, that's the ideal, where you put it is along the expressway.
Right, yeah. One of the, when, so, yeah, there is a little bit less land, future land use planned for industrial that we have on our zoning map right now. So that's something that we need to consider as we think about more of, we have a new future land use map. And you also get a little less vacant industrial land for the same reason, right? And then there are sixty-six acres that are occupied by other uses. Again, that sixty-six acre figure is a little deceptive because, yes, you do have the Trinity Secret Housing Project, but you also have houses that are on these just super deep bowling alley lots in the thirty-three mile corridor. Tons of acreage on those lots, but there's one house right up at the street. So if someone were to buy those and combine them, you could possibly even put an industrial subdivision in there. It's just that right now, those sixty-six acres are being occupied by, you know, a few different uses. That includes the courthouse and Lions baseball fields too, actually. When we look at office, you know, we have nine acres zoned office, five of which are vacant, and we've got thirty-five acres planned for office. I'm going to give you some statistics about office demand in a minute. That's probably making you all think about whether or not that's an appropriate amount of office land to have planned on our future land use map. Because twenty-seven acres of that is, is vacant, and four and a half of it is occupied by other uses right now, so that would be a lot of land.
Are each of these categories, are they, does the future land use numbers include the current zoning, or do they each stand alone?
Yeah, they're two different maps, yeah. And they don't match each other, as you can see from the totals. And then when we look at commercial on our future land use map, fifty-eight acres, thirty-two vacant, two occupied by some other use. So, yeah, and again, based, that's based on the actual measurement of the land on the map with parcel boundaries. Consideration to recent site plan approvals is also given there as well. Want to talk a little bit about the market, particularly for industrial. So when we look back to, this is the most recent report I have available, we look back to mid-two thousand twenty-two. Four of Michigan's eleven major industry sectors have surpassed the February pre-pandemic job growths as of mid-two thousand twenty-two. So and we're, we've gone beyond that now, so we are way into recovery of job loss from the pandemic. We are surpassed by, by the full of the pandemic here. Trade, transportation, utilities, construction, mining, logging were three industrial sectors there. Industrial has really been surging for a long time now here. New industrial leasing in the first half of two thousand twenty-two is four point seven million square feet. It's a hundred thirty-seven point nine percent increase year-over-year. It's one of the largest mid-year new leasing totals on record in Michigan. So, you know, you get past a certain point in history, and your record's on the way. But nevertheless, you're looking at probably seventy years of pretty solid records you make there. So that's a very large total, and it's just continued since then. We do not have a lot of industrial vacancy in southeast Michigan right now. You know, if you look at, you know, Macomb North, which is where we are, you know, that along with Macomb South dominated the leasing landscape, accounting for about half of it. So Macomb North also includes Washington to the south, I think you're all aware, there's a lot of development there. One thing about these numbers, and it doesn't really matter which sector you're talking about, when you get one very large user, they can't skip the numbers. So for instance, before the Kmart headquarters was torn down last year, actually, the beginning of this year, it was counted as vacant office space. So Troy had, you know, how many you know it was, like, three hundred sixty thousand square feet of vacant office space. That is no longer showing up on the books, so it looks like Troy suddenly has a lot less vacant office space, but it's not because it got occupied, it's because it's not there anymore. So there are some nuances to how these numbers all kind of shift around. But at any rate, industrial demand is very, very high. Looking at Macomb County specifically, the county does have a very intense program of outreach to industrial companies. Trying to get them to locate here. So, you know, you've got a chance to kind of attract a share of each of the sectors that they're constantly reaching out to with your industrial land. So we have a lot of augur here, of course. We have over about fifty-seven thousand augur related jobs in Macomb County. And of course, six square miles of our township is part of the augur industry. And average earnings are pretty high here, about ninety thousand, the national average, about seventy-one. And then defense is another major industry in Macomb, healthcare is a major industry pretty much everywhere now, but we have about forty-one thousand healthcare jobs in Macomb County. And then agriculture is another major Macomb County industry. And of course, Bruce, being at the north end of the county, is going to be a bigger part of that than a lot of our neighbors to the south, which have lost most of their farm and property. I included some information about Macomb next year and their industry four point oh concept where they're trying to go after, you know, more technological type businesses in terms of what they're trying to attract. And I think that our recent changes to our industrial zoning kind of go in that direction.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
For that sort of tech laboratory research, et cetera, in that, in those changes. And I also provided a whole map here that just shows kind of some of the inventories. This is as of the third quarter of last year, was the initial quarter had from Signature Associates. So the north or the east corridor, rather, is where we are on this map. And you can see there's a three point one four percent vacancy rate for industrial here, which is extremely low. That there's, basically, it's hard to find space unless you're willing to build it. And I've got a few other reports here that I'm going to holistically give you a sense of how things are going. One of the things that we think about when we think about demand for land for particular uses is absorption. How much of this are we getting over time? How fast is it coming into the community? In the second quarter of two thousand twenty-four, and this is per PA Commercial, Corporate, and Investment Real Estate, these reports are, usually they're a couple quarters behind where we are, but it's a summary. And they found a, got a twelve percent vacancy rate in office in the region. And a negative twelve-month net absorption rate. So we lost two hundred fifty-six thousand square feet of leased office space in the year leading up to the second quarter of two thousand twenty-four. That kind of goes back to what I was saying earlier about all the land that we have designated for office on our future land use map. The chances of absorption of that land by office uses are pretty small on a five-to-ten-year timeframe.
And that loss of two fifty-six, so that's indicating things that were zoned office or office use have been changed.
That's square footage that is no longer being leased, so it's, that's empty office now.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
So it still exists, it's just the, the usage has dropped?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And some of our most office-heavy communities like Southfield and Troy, like, it really got hammered by, by losing tenants in their office development. When we look at commercial real estate, that vacancy rate's only four percent. It's actually not that bad. It's a pretty solid vacancy rate. And there were about two point eight million square feet occupied in the twelve months prior, so fairly healthy, but operating near capacity. Now, of course, where that goes is an important question. So businesses tend to go where the people are, you know, whether you're a retail or a restaurant or something. So denser areas have definitely received more of those new businesses. Whereas in, in Bruce, we're kind of on the edge. So there's a lot of commercially zoned land to the south of us that hasn't filled up yet, which I think is one of the things that dampens our absorption rate here. We did just approve a new commercial plaza over at thirty-three and McKay. That might satiate the commercial demand in the township for a while. That might be our next five to ten years of, of commercial development. You know, there's always a chance that something else will come out here, but if you look at Washington Township's future land use map, just to the south of us, they have commercial on the south side of thirty-two mile, east of M fifty-three, across from the Ford facility. There's a lot of acreage that is planned for commercial over there. So that's probably going to fill up prior to people coming here if they do use it for commercial, or if they let someone use it as a commercial. So we've got a little bit of, kind of a buffer to the south of us, if you will, that's going to absorb a lot of the commercial that's coming up the M fifty-three corridor before it gets to us. So when we're thinking about how much land is open for commercial, how much, you know, we need, that's a consideration, is that we do have some that's vacant already. If this rezoning goes through, we'll have six acres fewer. But there is some question about the usefulness of some of that land for commercial purposes. But we'll still have, you know, some land available. And the future land use map has it in a few different places than the actual zoning map right now as well. And then when we look at industrial, that vacancy rate as of earlier this year was around five percent, but there was a lot of absorption. And, oh, sorry, that's retail. So retail, retail's a somewhat higher vacancy rate.
How does retail vary from commercial?
So it's a subcategory of commercial. In that commercial, the broader commercial category would include restaurants and a lot of other things, hotels, et cetera, things like that. And then industrial, where's the vacancy figure? Overall vacancy was around four percent there, as well as at the end of last year. So again, really low vacancy rates. And, you know, of course, we can't, we don't know what the future holds, but in general, job growth over the last several years since it came out of the meat of the pandemic has been very strong. So that's part of what's been, what's been driving all this additional development. And when we're thinking about, well, what do we do with our future land use map? I guess there's a few different angles that we can take on this. One is, you know, what do we want? Obviously, that's a big one. What is it, what is realistically going to come our way? Of these three categories, commercial, industrial, office. Industrial is the thing that's most likely to be coming our way in the highest, largest quantities, I guess I would say. Office is the thing that is least likely to be coming our way. In fact, it's In fact, it's very unlikely that we'll be getting a lot of office development. If we do, it would probably be medical, because almost all office that's being built right now is medical. And then commercial falls somewhere in the middle. I think there is, there's more land as though we didn't plan for commercial to the south of us that is going to be absorbed before commercial leapfrogs here, whereas industrial will come straight here, because it's a lot less locationally sensitive than commercial.
From a, from a planning perspective, when, when you're kind of laying out your future plans, how long do you usually look out what's considered the future?
Right, so usually you're trying to look at about a twenty year time horizon. Now, you do review master plan every five years under Michigan statutes, but generally speaking, you're trying to look ahead twenty years. And you might look in five years and say, well, a lot more has happened than we were expecting, so we need to update again. But you might also look in five years and say, okay, things are proceeding about like we thought and, or a little slower and we don't need to change anything. But yeah, usually you're trying to look at it about twenty years, back ahead and try to have roughly the right amount of land planned for what you're expecting to receive.
Well, then I would read that about it being critically important where that is going to be, because during the twenty years, other things, namely residential, will be coming up, you know, around it. And people have a reasonable expectation that, you know, they're not going to have, you know, something that they would consider undesirable in their, you know, neighborhood.
Yep. Yeah, and I mean, ultimately, we have our water and sewer districts. And that's really gonna be the, the biggest break on the amount of residential development that can occur here is where that water and sewer does become available and planned. Because you just can't go very dense if you don't have the, the water and sewer. So the intensity of what gets built here is going to be limited by that.
Does that impact the industrial as well?
It impacts the industrial a lot less. There are industrial uses that use a lot of water. And also have very big sanitary sewer uses as a result of using a lot of water. And then think about something like a stone cover or something like that, that would be using water all day. But most industrial uses really don't use very much. Their residential approval units are very, very low in terms of their overall usage. One of the things about industrial now is that, you know, whereas you know, a thousand square feet of industrial shop space might fifty years ago have been occupied by ten to fifteen people. Now it might be like two people, if that. Because so many things have become automated or machine assisted that just the number of people in these spaces is a lot, lot smaller. And when you don't have people around, you wind up using a lot less water, generally speaking. Like I said, unless you're one of those kind of specialized industrial uses that happens to use a lot of this. So generally speaking, when we're planning for industrial, we plan for barely low water usage on a per year basis relative to like residential development or commercial development.
So going back to Ann Marie's question, timeframe, horizon. With a, with a potential twenty year perspective of where we view growth coming from, let's just take for argument's sake, for, for hypothetical sake, we, we think there's gonna be a massive growth in office space twenty years from now or over the next twenty years. But we don't know that it's gonna come in the next five years. Like we think, you know, it's gonna be a long, playing the long game, but we see office space and again, all hypothetical. We would though today in the future land use be carving out where we would want that office space to go.
Yeah, exactly. And the beautiful thing about a future land use map is that it's not a zoning map. So you can plan for it, and if the demand isn't there, you don't have to rezonate. You can leave the land planned, and then if the, if the demand crops up ten years later, you can rezonate then. That's, that's the, the thing about a future land use map is that you can put something on your future land use map without immediately heading out and changing the zoning. You can kind of create a, you're creating an opportunity essentially to rezonate.
And if that property, so that property could still be developed in, something that's compliant with the zoning standards today?
Yeah, exactly, yep.
But potentially in the future, that could get?
Right, yeah, things change. Yeah, so if, if, if you leave it zoned as is, then you might wind up getting something in there or like a construction or something like that. But you're, like I said, you're creating the opportunity to change the zoning on that land in the future.
How, I guess, how then does it get? What guidelines then does the planning commission use as a project comes in? If the project meets zoning today, but wasn't in line with what we think the long term use is?
If it's a buy right use, you'd prove it.
Okay.
If you're, if you get into a more discretionary approval, like a special land use or something?
Then you have the opportunity to say it doesn't align with what we think future plans for this area would be, okay?
Exactly. If someone were to come to you and ask to rezonate to, let's say you plan something industrial and they want to rezonate to a lot of one, well, there's a pretty good case for rezoning it because you've already planned that land for that use.
Okay. That makes sense, okay.
You know, but if they were to come in and ask to rezonate it's a office and you planned it for industrial, that probably makes a little less sense, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, the, the purpose of this was mostly informational, to get you a little more familiar with the kind of granular analysis of the, of the land and what's available, a little bit about what the demand is and what might become. I've got some kind of aggregated future land uses zoning data for the M fifty three corridor that I made together for you for your next meeting. A Superior Society was gonna help me, so it's really starting. So that'll be something that we'll be looking at next time, just so that you can have a sense of how much land there is waiting to catch all this stuff to the south of us, and a little bit about west to the north of us as well. But kind of our next step here is to start thinking about what we want to ask our residents in the survey. And we're gonna be gauging their opinions at some point early in the new year. And that's something that we should just start thinking about now. So I'm probably gonna be trying to work up a set of preliminary questions for the January meeting that we can start looking at. And then we can go through those together and work up a, a survey that we think will help us make some of the decisions that we can make about, you know, where this land covers. Where these uses should be, where they're going to be placed on future land use map.
Joe, I have a question. I think it was our last meeting where we talked about getting a lot of this kind of information in an appropriate format up in front of people. So if they were of the mind, they would have something to look at before they fill out a survey.
Right, yeah.
And I thought you said you were gonna work on some ideas?
Yeah, I've got a, a platform that I have put some of the information on, on all of it. But it's basically a little website. It would also house a link to the survey, so people can review some of the background information and then take the survey. It's not ready yet, but we are.
So would the link to the website be on our existing Bruce Township website?
Yeah.
And is the, is the special site, for instance, is it gonna contain any, some kind of distillation of all this stuff?
That's the idea, yeah. So the presentation I did last time is kind of the starting point for what we talked about last time, because it's kind of hits the highlights. And then from the information we talked about tonight, we could give a little bit of a distillation of that as well. Trying not to overwhelm people, because if they've gotta go through a thousand words of content, it's, nobody's got time for that. So it's really more like the, the highlights, bullet points, a few slides that they can get through quickly, help them get the lay of the land, basically. And that would include some maps, here's what's zoned, here's what's planned, here's the difference between zoning and planning, and then a little bit of background and then tell us what you think.
Could that website contain, like, if they were of the mind to watch any of our prior meetings where we were discussing it?
You could link to them here.
Correct, especially as we're, you know, the last few meetings, we really, after the board approved the funding for it, we got more into the meter, but.
Yep.
Could it just say, like, give what period of the video they could scroll to to watch?
Yeah, yeah, you can say the conversation starts at fifty minutes, forty two seconds, or whatever, yeah.
Okay, so we have some flexibility to add into what you're creating?
Yeah, we can have a little subpage that says, you know, past public discussions or something like that. And then you just link to each of the videos and say, go to this point in the video, go to this point in the video, and people would be able to just go right there.
All right, any other discussion this evening around the master plan topic?
Do I have a lot of questions on the map, but I think I can just catch up.
Sure.
Mostly just my wondering, not being able to say it now.
Sure.
Hearing other questions, move on to ten B. Thanks, Joe. Ongoing discussion around agribusiness and agrotourism? Five G? Anything to talk about there, Joe? Okay. That takes us to item eleven. So as you recall, we meant at the agenda include item eleven A, which is the election of the vice chair. So with Ed's resignation from the planning commission, we have added Darryl Blaylock back. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but Darryl was serving in a temporary capacity due to some of the changes on the board. So with the election that has changed and now with Ed's resignation, we've added, Darryl was added back to the planning commission as a full time member. However, Ed was the vice chairperson, and so we do need to elect a new chair, a vice chairperson. And I have, I talked to several of you and Rick has offered to step up and assume that role, which I appreciate you being willing to do.
Is that a nomination of, sort of?
Are you willing to accept a nomination?
I'd like to accept a nomination. And what's the term typically for it?
It's, well, you guys do your typical election in Jan, July.
July.
Yeah, so you would be vice chair until July, and then in July, we would decide whether I should be vice chair.
Rather than be considered that, this is just into perpetuating. I'd like to include in the record that, you know, you're willing to do it a year from July. And also encouraging the other planning commission members, the ones that are eligible to be the vice chair, in the meantime, to pay very close attention to the way that the chair is conducting the meeting, you know, whether there's votes of affirmation or roll call, just the structure of the meeting. And, because you know, I'm now one of the older people on the planning commission and, you know, at, at some point, you know, I'm not gonna be able to do this. So I would hope everybody would, you know, kind of in the meantime, increase their knowledge, be ready to take and fill in and, you know, spread out the, spread out the responsibilities we go along a little bit. So, but anyway, that's all I've got to add. Glad to do it.
We need a second?
You can make a motion, right?
Yeah, I would, yeah, make a motion to nominate Rick Agalcine as the vice chair.
Any other nominations?
Any other nominations that want the role that would like to compete against Rick? Hearing none? We will, is it roll call or just a?
You can do it by acclamation or roll call, it's a real your call.
Okay. We'll just do a verbal, so. All in favor of Rick becoming the vice chair for the planning commission, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Or she cares? All right, item, so that wraps up new business. Item twelve, comments from committees and consultants. Dan or Joe, anything else we haven't already heard from you about? And we don't have any committees. Well, we have a new subcommittee, but we will hear from you all next time. Comments from commissioners? Okay?
I have to make a correction on something I reported last month, which is at the very end, I just made some comments about the number of condominiums we have in the township as a result of, or as a, you know, what percentage of our total housing stock. And I accurately reported that we exist and have one hundred and twenty five total condominiums. I did not accurately report the number of one story ranch condos versus others. The bigger metals, in fact, is a split between ranch style, although they look a little bigger, versus truly two stories. So the correct numbers are, we have sixty two one story condominiums. We have three condominiums that are, what, a story and a half or a story and three quarters? And we have sixty condominiums that are two stories. And that still adds up to one twenty five.
Thank you for the clarification. Start to make your statement.
I have, I'll call it an idea sheet that I'm gonna distribute to the fellow planning commissioners. And, you know, we don't, it's probably not appropriate we discuss it here, but take a look at it. And if you want more details, please give me a call in your free time to obtain more information. Basically, what it is, is my opinion on what I personally would like to see for a a rezoning district in the township. I I believe it to be an unmet need. So, this kind of, what I put together is based on my experience where I have lived in my life and what my comfort level was in those different homes. And, you know, I'm at the point right now where I may find myself needing to sell my, you know, home, lodge home on two acres and move into a condo. So, basically, this is something I would be interested in a first look at. And also, this was loosely based on conversation with Mike Trump like where he's currently living. So, so anyway, take a look at that, and Joe's gonna get a copy as well. It's just an idea. And what do you say, Andrew, is that we got it?
Okay, all right.
Well, make sure you got the latest.
Yes.
I'll send you the latest one. Oh, okay.
Sure. This is restricted to ranch?
Yes.
But where is it?
In the title, it says.
Oh, ranch, okay. So, just first blush, I know we don't want to get into deep discussion, but is this intended to be less dense? Less dense than RM one?
Yes.
And RM one is the least dense multiple family you got now, all right?
The the starting point for this is these hatch, ranch condos. That's a, that's a starting point. And.
Okay.
Joe, at this point, upset about it?
Uh, yeah.
Interesting idea.
Thank you.
All right, that wraps us up. Move to adjourn at eight forty six P M. Is there a second?
Second.
Second if I can, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.